Welcome to. Welcome to the Environment Committee meeting of Buckingham County Council on Monday, the 17th of April 2023. The first item, we're going to move to a public section. No members of the public? Okay. So, item one on the agenda, apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies for that?
Yes, we have apologies for our councillor's shame.
Fantastic, thank you. And declarations.
I'm going to kick your councillor Ahmed is intending to die and she said apologies for asking physically telling.
Right, can we accept those apologies? We can agree. And the next item on the agenda, agenda, agenda item two is declarations of interest.
Yes, I'm as a resident of St Rumbold Fields, I am a member of the residents management company.
Thank you very much. And item agenda, well, agenda item number three, the minutes for the Environment Committee held on the 20th of February 2023. Sure, we will, oh, and received at full council on the 20th of March 2023. Are we happy to accept those minutes? Thank you. And welcome to Rabena.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
So, item agenda, item number four, the action report in appendix A. Any questions, comments?
It's on the agenda, isn't it?
Yeah. And so, agenda item five, the budgets to receive the last figures in appendix B. Are we okay with these figures or any questions or comments? Councillor Gay.
Thank you. On page six, 4159, Laecyl Electricity. My question is, has there been any impact of us having solar panels? Because it looks as though, and as you know, I'm not great at reading these things. But it looks as though we've already used 114.4% of our.
We have, and these solar panels have actually had quite a substantial impact. If it hadn't have been for them with the unbelievable price rises we've had this year, it would have been considerably worse.
Right, okay.
But they obviously only worked in the summer, or only worked particularly effectively when the sun's out. Which means that we still need lighting in the evenings and all of those other things still have to run out of hours. But they have made an impact and we did, I'll go back over the figures, I can't quite remember the percentage, but it was significant.
Okay, that's good.
Councillor Stutford.
Yeah, a few things says the note in the predicted overspend on salary pensions and whatever they are noting. The new sponsor for the roundabout for 4104. Who is the, have we got a new sponsor? Are we looking for a new sponsor? It says costs incurred there.
Sorry, 4104, I can't find it off the top of my head, but the new roundabout. We are responsible when we take on a new sponsor of providing the signage for that new sponsor. So that additional cost was for us putting it basically finally installing the new signs for them.
Yeah, okay. What I thought it was, but yeah.
What page was that, sorry?
Page.
It's 4108, isn't it?
That's what I think, I can find 4104. Yeah, it's 4108.
I'm apologising, but it's not printed the information very clearly, I've seen it on the screen.
Councillor Stutford.
Well, just a positive, then, 4.222, a refund on rates, that always looks good news. That's, it's all about stand up and give a round of applause for that, I mean, a refund on something.
Are we happy to accept the budget and move on to the next agenda item? Yeah. So, item six on the agenda. Railway walk and conservation coordinator to receive a report from the estates manager.
Administrator.
Oh, administrator, oh, sorry. From Nina, exactly, yeah, that's.
Nina, I'm happy to quickly introduce it to members if you'd like there.
If you would.
This is a very difficult one. I'm sure you're aware that Nina has really, really worked hard. Tried to come out with a solution to what to do for the long term. My ability of the railway walk conservation group and the plan of action took on last year is that we employed an organisation, the TCB, the Cross the Conservation Volunteers, and gave them what a substantial chunk of money to run the group, a couple of our voluntary groups, but this was the main one. And part of what we hoped was their brief was that they would leave the committee, sorry, leave the group at the end of the year with a fully formed committee that could stand on its own feet. I'm sure you're all members of numerous committees, you're aware that if you don't have a formed committee or the chair, a treasurer, etc., etc. You're not really an entity and therefore applying for grants is very difficult. This has not happened. TCB state that they have tried hard to do this, but there is no investment within the group of taking any of that on themselves. Our ability, well, our attempts to recruit have so far drawn a blank. My last, well, I'm pinning my hopes on, we're having a huge push on volunteering as part of the big help out on 6th of May. And I've asked all of our communications team and Nina as well to really put a big push on. This is the last chance. If we can't find anybody to step forward, this group is going to fold. Please, if you care about it, if you turn up regularly, we'll help you, we'll support you. But we do need some people to step up and take on the organisation. Unfortunately, the recommendation that follows on from that, so that there's an understanding that this is serious, it's not an idle threat, is that if we can't form a management committee and we dissolve the group and we bring the work back in-house, which from our point of view is actually more efficient. But obviously, it's a bit of a shame to see that volunteering opportunity go. But it's difficult for us to say that spending, you know, five, six, seven thousand pounds a year. It's nice for the people to turn up and do it, but it's difficult to justify that, that costing. I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions and Lee is here on the screen and as well, maybe to talk to you in more detail.
Councillor Stutford.
Yeah, well, that's disappointing, but the simple fact is that the railway conservation group has saved us tens of thousands of pounds over the years, that the work they've done has been substantial. And the type of work they've done, if you were to price it per hour, what they've put into it and the work they've done with the trees and what they've done with the coppers in the land downwoods and that, the sort of, I don't, I disagree with the fact that it's, that it was what we would get for the money that we put in there would be truly not as much because they tend to go down there in their spare time. You can see their work. If you've seen it over 10 or 20 years, what they've done, it's been, it's been remarkable. Saying that, we do have a conservation group event next weekend, don't we? The green.
We can have a little push on that as well.
We can, we can, we can push it during that event. Who knows? There may be a person in the community who's coming along, it's just what they want to do. The danger of bringing it back in-house is it's an additional thing to do. We've got to actually. It's almost a job in itself, if you work at the hours that they've put into the conservation work there. And we could get the areas that they've cleared, the glens and stuff that they've cleared, which now have got wildflowers in them and stuff that they didn't have before because they created some light. Five years, six years, you could soon see that come, the plants will ingress into their mature. So even if we take it back in-house, I don't think that's the permanent solution. I think we do need to keep working to get a conservation group in there because they took ownership of it and we did give an award out, didn't we, was it last year and the year before, to one of the long-acting conservation groups? So it's a sad read in the report. I would hesitate to take it back in. I think we should just keep trying, but yeah, thank you.
Councillor Heather, anything?
It has been rather like bogging the dead horse to try to get somebody to lead the group. There are loads of people that love going down there and volunteering, but absolutely nobody wants to take it on. And I kind of think that maybe this pandemic changed everything, people reset their priorities, what they wanted to do. The previously, they've done it for many years, decided they wanted to be. And I'm aware of a very active manager who actually moved away from the area. So it would be lovely if somebody does emerge and it's worth trying, but it really can't go on the way it is. As I say, plenty of people that are putting likes on Facebook, they all like it.
Yeah.
But nobody wants to do this vital thing. And it's actually more trouble than it's worth to actually lead a voluntary group that can't find its own leader.
Any further comments? Oh, Councillor Gay, and then I'll take it.
Yeah, a couple of things. On point of accuracy, I think the big help out's on May the 8th, isn't it? May the 6th is the coronation day.
So sorry.
Just so it's accurate for the record.
But I will say, I really wrote out Nina's report, so that is my mistake.
But apart from that, just on the issue of volunteers, because I know it's becoming increasingly difficult to get volunteers wherever you're looking. And I think this is just a reflection of that difficulty. People, you know, some people are prepared to help, but to get somebody to actually take responsibility is another level of game. So it's just a reflection of where we are as a society, I think, at the moment. Hopefully it'll change again, but at the moment, it's quite difficult.
Councillor Stutford.
I think it'd be useful just to scope out the body of things that's happened. And we'll discuss this here and we'll take it back in-house and then then heavily monitor the environmental improvements afterwards. But I think it would be useful, if we have to take it back out, that we actually scope out the type of work that goes down there. The schemes that's happened, we've got the minutes in probably last two years, maybe, that's probably fair enough. Let's just go the title works, so at least if we take it being held, we try to mirror what's gone on, which is anyone remembers what it was like 20 years ago, it was dark, there was no light in there and and it's difficult. And also, we know, hopefully, there'll be a new cycle way through there at some point, hopefully. But, but I think we ought to scope that out and at least discuss it so that we as members have an understanding of what the workload is in there. Because, and we can start to monitor that and see how it's going to do if that is the case, because just we have regular reports on it, so we read the reports, we see what's gone on. And I don't envisage that being easily possible. And we're not here to, if it's been done by the staff, we're not here to manage. The staff, my staff, no, so I think we need to have an understanding of what we want out of it and what we want it to do there on. Because we need to keep that feature of it going, even if we haven't got the individuals. And who knows, somebody might come along at some point who wants to take it on. So I'd like to propose that we do have, irrespective of what happens, a report of the types of work, so everybody understands it. So that we have some scope out what we want to achieve down there, because it has been quite nice in the sense that we've allowed them some real liberty about what they do. It's been a really cooperative thing. It's not been particularly office, as far as I can see, it hasn't been a great burden on the office.
It has been extremely unconsuming, partly in the background, it's taken a lot of Nina's time, she's told me.
Yeah, well, in any case, when we need to review it against all the known whatever, and then see how we, as a committee, wish it to carry on thereafter. Otherwise, we lose not only the community impact, we'll lose governance over it for the next 20 years.
So from what I understand, you proposed that we report on the works going down the hill. So, so. Councillor O'Donnell, are you?
Thank you. My only concern with that is that it might be micro managed, Lee and his team, a little bit. Because we know that the work that's gone on down there has been sufficient to keep it nice as it is now. I cannot see that it deteriorating much by bringing it in-house. He's not going to let it go to pot, basically. Lee and the green spaces team aren't going to let it degrade, are they? So, I don't know. Is it, is it going to be making more work for Lee to write a big report on it?
Would you like Lee's input?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably just, yeah, carry on with what they're doing. The main thing is cutting the glades in the, in the autumn. And then pruning, pruning back the vegetation as well around those blades. But we were already doing quite a bit of maintenance ourselves down there, so looking after the footpath, fencing, lots of other pieces, but there is more work to do. So it'll be more of an ongoing thing, probably for next year. Or well, from the autumn onwards, but we'll, we'll start programming in some works. I don't think it really needs a report on it, but that's up to you.
Councillor Stutford.
Lastly, there was some equipment which was purchased with council funds for this group. And that equipment, I understand, is being stored in the old lavatories of the gents toilets, if I'm correct. So we need, there is equipment there which has got value. And, and we need to quantify what that is. Because it's various executives and different stuff that gloves and quite equipment for doing environmental projects. So even if, even if we're not going to, and I'm at that, if we want, we need to know what equipment is available there. So that if we ever do plan to do an environmental project with a separate one, we can reuse that equipment as it was paid for by the public purse and shouldn't just sit there.
May I reassure the councillor? Very much within the spirit of the report is that we will try and keep these volunteers that we have on our books and make sure that we're inviting them to our bulk planting, our fair planting and our other, our other volunteer days that we have. So we still, there will still be use of that equipment specifically for the clearance. But I can find a staff member to run a tree planting session part of our, a part of our shared development group. But finding another staff member to basically run the group, turn out a group to their Saturdays, is it Saturday, Sunday? And run that group, that's quite a significant amount of time when you don't have it in-house.
Yeah. I'm happy to go with recommendations, gentlemen.
Are we okay to repeat the recommendations?
Yeah.
For both?
Yeah.
Those in favour?
That's everybody, look, that's the stuff we.
I'll abstain.
One up.
Fantastic. So we've got an update on the tiny forest for item agenda, agenda item number seven. From the estates administrator, do you mind if I call that, Claire?
See, I wasn't there, how did, would you mind talking in the committed group, how was that, sorry, Jen?
Yeah, I think the report gives the detail, but I think the event was very successful and the key from it is that the tree wardens are going to be involved and certain volunteers are going to be involved in monitoring it and feeding back the information. Yeah, we're all really interested to see how it will work. It'll be, it's very different to sort of other tree planting we do, it's all very closely planted and the idea that it'll be quite intensely vegetated area, but I think, yeah, it'd be quite interesting to see the results of it over the coming years. Not too much maintenance from us, just keeping an eye on it. Certainly watering is going to be a bit, maybe an issue in the first couple of years. But other than that, I think it's a really successful little project and it'll be interesting to see how it goes.
Good.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Any questions or comments? Councillor Davis.
I'd just like to say, it was fantastic to see the number of diverse people that actually turned up for it. It was, it was a great community effort.
Councillor Stutford.
Yeah, I, I thought it was rewarding. We had, we had so many shovels, almost as many shovels as we had trees.
We lost mine about six times.
Yeah, every time they were trying to tidy up, you had to keep getting your shovel back, but they were taking our shovels away.
Spades, actually.
Spade, correct, yes, correction there. As you can see in the photograph, we totally hung on to our spades after that. So we didn't, we didn't lose them as part of their next project. And Spirit and Jackson was not really wanting to go for a ride. But, but no, I would say it was quite good. We had we had the pleasure of the deputy cabinet member turning up and planting a tree. And with a spade, which was whatever, and also what was impressive is the amount of young children, community people of various as already said, the diverse background of them. I do think it'd be worth monitoring how it goes. First time we've done a sort of tiny forest project. They have been, the idea of them is that their trees grow so tightly together that, that they draw each other up and they don't need much looking after. It's in quite a damp area and it's, it's been well mulched. Let's hope we don't have too dry a summer.
Too. Love not to.
Yeah, it was well mulched, wasn't it? Let's hope we don't have too dry a summer and they, and they, they get a chance to get hold because as you read so often on motorway planting schemes, how many trees are actually planted? And then they actually don't make it through and we must be conscious of that. So I expect they'll be monitored and I think we should, any day now, see some of them budding. It'd be useful to have a report at some point, how many of them are budding and coming on. There was various different species we put in, weren't there? And it was, it was awfully good and I, I very enjoyed leaning on the spade.
Good to hear. Any further comments, questions? Oh, Rabena, councillor Ahmed.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I was also present at the tiny forest planting and it, I was really surprised by the number of people who turned out and I know councillor Davies has mentioned the diverse nature of people who have come. I think she's probably referring to the number of residents, the current residents of Best Western Hotel who turned up and worked very, very hard on the day. So they have to receive a mention for that, in my opinion, because there were quite a few and they worked incredibly hard. So thank you to them as well and everyone else in the community who turned up. It was a great day. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Agreed.
Are we okay to, oh.
I'm not, I tried to get there and I couldn't find it.
Councillor Stutford.
I do think it worth mentioning. We might all think we know where something is, but if you're a councillor and you can't find it and, and whatever, I think maybe just need to at least be reassured or give a contact number on the event so that a councillor can phone up someone and give them directions. I know it was an irritation to you not being able to find it and and you would have been amongst a crowd, fortunately, but you were messed. And I think maybe when we do something like this, it'd have a number so we can sort of, as councillors, because we are given the time to turn up something and then you miss it. It's immensely frustrating. There's nothing like turning up to a party when it's closed, is it, and finished? You have to find another party, don't you, but, but you know what I mean, it's, it, can I suggest that in future we have a telephone number for councillors to phone to make sure that if they are lost, can't find it or can't work out where it is, we can at least all, an officer can direct them to it.
Councillor Davies.
Can I suggest that at the time, if there's an event particularly within Borton Park, but somewhere which isn't necessarily known to everybody where it is, we have a little map. Awesome.
Councillor O'Donnell.
There is an app, I have mentioned numerous times in meetings called what, three words? And it grid references exactly where things are and you can point to, like pinpoint on a map to a little square and it will track where that is. So something like that could also be used, but like, these can be worked out outside of the meeting, chairman.
I, I didn't think it was going to be absolute, you're not messing up, you know, I was just frustrated myself and I couldn't find it, if anything else.
So we've got, are we okay to move to agenda, agenda item number nine? Oh no, sorry, eight, skipping one. And the new cemetery and allotments proposal to receive a verbal update from the town clerk. Over to you, Claire.
We had intended that this would be a full ballot on the agenda, you know, to, to look through and comment on and give your feedback. Unfortunately, it arrived quite late on Wednesday and it was missing some quite important calculations behind it. And additionally, Lee's gone through it and came up with 19 questions that he wants to ask himself over various things. I don't want to waste your time bringing something half-done and not fully casted to you, so we have held that back for the moment. Pushing this on, so back to our cemetery design and practice, basically to bring something forward that is in a state that the office is at least happy to support and we're not there yet. So I'm sorry about that. It's not a great delay, it's not great having another delay. If we get things back on time and especially if we get movement on the cemetery purchase, I think I will have a chat with the relevant chair and see if maybe we put an extraordinary in. It does depend on the timing, whether or not that's going to be required. It's obviously quite a busy May anyway, but the next meeting's not until 17th of June. And, but yeah. Sorry. June, June.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a way off, but we are slightly, we're in a position where we are stuck because we can't design it ourselves. And the important question is around things like sewage, water, electricity and car charging. And these not happening with the car park design, that it's, we have the longevity that we need. These things will need to go back and be ironed out again. So that's where we are at the moment. If required, hopefully, get it to you ASAP and we'll, we'll put it towardly on the agenda to the platters that we can get it to full council, but we're not there yet.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any councillors?
Has the, all the paperwork in relation to that all been completed before we now ahead of it in terms of new college Oxford? And secondly, have we, are we in conversation with the present tenant? Who farms the land, because I know he's got a crop out there at the moment. And, and I imagine he's probably anticipating harvesting it if we were to start works. Might need some careful managing with the farmer, because he, I believe, he, he's been waiting for something to happen, like we've been waiting for something to happen. And his plant is the whole filled with crop at the moment. So I should imagine that he's anticipating harvesting it, just to be assured that the conversations, I know they would have done.
No, there was no conversation with the farmer, he's a tenant of the college, it's not for us to have that conversation directly with him. We have spoken to the college and asked them to come forward from there. But no, we haven't spoken directly to the farmer.
Well, just that there is a cost in planting a crop, there's a cost in harvesting it. And, and I think we do need to not for us councillors, so I do, I do know the chap personally, but it's not for us councillors to enter conversations with him. But I work in agriculture, so you know everybody, but, but I do think we ought to at least and have a conversation to let him advise him of what we're planning to do and whatever, so that he gets some idea because he may feel that he's lost something with a crop, because to be honest, we must have agreed for it to be planted, so we do need to actually consider that.
Well, I would have to clarify, we have had no contact, we haven't agreed on anything, he planted that, so 100% of conversation between him and his landlord. I, I don't know what we can say to him, would be legally binding from our point of view.
Councillor Gay and then councillor Davies.
Thank you very much. It's not a secret that a cemetery is planned for that area. There are no, there are, there have been signs, some of which have been taken down. But if you approach Buckingham from the Vista direction, you can actually. But if you approach Buckingham from the Vista direction, you can actually see a road sign that's in what will be the new cemetery directing you which way to go at that roundabout. So anybody who's got an interest in that land, you know, if they're not aware that we're planning to build a cemetery there, then they're, you know, I, I don't understand how that could have happened, really.
Councillor Davies.
I'm wondering, thinking that we don't actually yet own the land. So therefore, any, any plans that we have, the land that we don't yet own, is irrelevant to the farmer, surely, who's a tenant of the current owners.
Councillor Stutford.
I'm all reassured, you're reassured. I just always think that in these aspects, don't believe that if we used to, we don't know what conversations, as councillor Davies rightly pointed out, we haven't actually taken possession of the land yet. So technically his agent, his tenant is the landlord. So, but I was just trying to be pleasant and, and I can imagine that when he drives in there with his combine to find out if it's missing, we might have a conversation, why not? But I didn't, I always just a, a simple conversation, say we have these plans to do something. He doesn't live in the parish, he isn't a great parent of Buckingham. So he won't necessarily pay that much attention to it, especially as he's been going on nearly, well, five years waiting for the planning application to go through and two years for us to get where we are. So he'd probably think, well, will it ever happen? I'm just trying to dot all the i's and t's, but if people think it isn't necessary, then I'll be on my own on it.
I understand, councillor, and I know you're probably the ninth, but I think I would suggest it's difficult. It's dangerous round for us to interfere between a tenant landlord relationship when we don't have skin in that game. We don't know the details of the conversation he's been having, the apology about.
If one question, I'll point it towards you.
Okay, we're going to move to the next item on the agenda. So we've got number nine, the climate emergency action plan. To receive and discuss any updates in relation to the climate emergency action plan. Any comments, questions, observation? Councillor Stutford.
As you say, many of the things are being moved forward thanks to Nina's diligence around it. Most of this is the full plan. Some of these are resources, some of them are events which were discussed previously. The ones here which are probably to do with this committee, of course, are the environment committee ones, of which there's comments against most of them, the way they're being progressed. So I'm reasonably content that they are being progressed and if you take action nine, it lists the type of trees that we're planting and whatever. So it's showing that we're, we're doing something. So the plan is working. So we shouldn't be going to other committees and stuffs here. But it just looked like many of the, many of the recommendations are gradually being moved forwards, which is what we want to do, isn't it?
Councillor Heather, right.
I thought it was particularly encouraging to see action number five. And that there's going to be a community climate cafe.
Any further comments? Okay. Agenda item number 10, updates from representatives on outside bodies to receive verbal updates from councillors.
Councillor Stutford. I will, just to give you, I mean, at the moment we're running it for council, there is things and questions being put in. I have been working, which is, is to do with this committee, I suppose incorrectly, because health comes under this committee. I've currently been working with councillors and will be tomorrow, working on putting together some recommendations to the, which will go for the Health and Security Committee. And then those recommendations, hopefully form recommendations to the cabinet, trying to amend the policies and the contracts and the way that we're actually dealing with dementia. One of the things which is quite prevalent outward or two things which shocked me, and I didn't know, was how many people there are with young people with dementia, which early set dementia. It's quite a high figure in the community and that was quite a realisation to me. The other thing which I found through the discussions was that if you can get the appropriate care in place, this is talking to Oxford Health, Mental Health Foundation, Oxford Trust. If you get the appropriate care in place at the earliest time, you can actually save two years of a person going into a care home, of which the evidence wasn't, I couldn't see the evidence that was taking place. Because the journey from diagnosis to care is, well, once you have the diagnosis, it's such a shock that people aren't automatically going, well, what's my next stage with this? So by the time they get back to their next stage, their conditions progress. So I don't know, some of the things we're working on is trying to make some recommendations to try and ease that on. But it is worthy and something that I think maybe we should do something on health. But this committee, we haven't done it on health for nearly 12 or 18 months on the agenda at all. So as health comes under imminent, this maybe the outcomes of it and the recommendations might be something which at some point we bring back here to discuss because we do have to do with dementia friendly and we do do people in the community. And it is something that we all are aware of. So that's with health. For those of you who didn't know, I will be, for my unwind things, be moving to join the Buckinghamshire, Oxford and West Berkshire Health Authority. So I'm going to be taking a place on there. So I'm sure they'll be pleased to see me.
Do they know you?
I don't know if they've ever seen Norfolk, but I'm sure that we'll find a way. But that'll be quite a test. And actually, it's really important, joking aside, you all, you all attended. I purposely stayed away from discussions with the health at our annual town meeting. Mainly because I was going to discuss it in other places and didn't think it was proper. But they're the people who are commissioning the funding and will oversee the funding for schemes like the Health Centre. They're the people who will decide future care, future funding going forward. So it will be interesting to see how they plan and it will be interesting to see what they do. Because I think we can safely say in Buckingham, think how many years we've been discussing Health Centre in Buckingham. It's probably almost a decade now, or close to a decade. So we know these things aren't easy to do. And so that will be interesting in itself. So as and when there's anything appropriate, I can bring it, maybe bring it and see where we can do some discussion around something manageable which relates to town council, which relates to things we can do and influence it or at least. But one of the things that I did, secondly, find out interesting the other day is in my questioning about education school places. I did find out that the council's plans is to, at this present time, to extend places for the growth of junior places in education. Their plans is to extend Page Hill, Primary, Buckingham Primary and Mays Morton School. They're looking at a bold class in Winslow because of the secondary school issue. And they're looking at Cotuslow as a bold class as well. But they are looking long term at doing a rationale about the provision in Buckingham Secondary School to provide discussions about future education there. Because what you will be aware of is that Winslow no longer does secondary school places. Six more, something like that. Thank you, Graham. You read my mind there. It's very difficult, but well done. So there is going to be plenty for us to do. And I think it would be interesting, once the written response to that question comes, I'll, I'll put it to a relevant committee. Because I think as we're looking at the local plan, discussing the local plan about, and that's part of it, it will be enlightening to know what the county's planning is. Although the figures I've been given, I'm not allowed to give you, so. Hence why I questioned them. Thank you.
Any questions to councillor Stutford? Thank you. So the agenda item number 11, news releases.
Going back to 10.
Okay.
Buckingham Community Wildlife Project. And I attended the meeting on Zoom on the 22nd of February, which sounds like an awful long time ago. And this body seems to have got itself into a most unfortunate time spell with its meetings because that meeting ended after an Environment Committee meeting. And I think the next, the next BCWP meeting is supposed to be on the 21st of June, which I think again is bits after one of these meetings. And so it's getting a bit out of step, I'm hoping, Morris.
Councillor.
Thank you. This is another casualty of COVID, I think, because I think until COVID, the BCWP meetings preceded this. They were six years, then followed seven, and that worked really well.
And then I thought that Russell Newall, who chairs it, thought that it's much more convenient to be having it on Zoom because people come from all over the place. But actually, hardly anybody's turning up. It's just the diehard ones that turn up. There's always me and Catherine Misskin's been turning up from TTV. Athena Beckett from NAR Society is in the stall box. But nobody much is turning up and it's not really doing what it says on the tin actually. I think what happened at the last one, as far as I recall of interest to us, was that Catherine Misskin was trying really, really hard to breathe some life into the railway walk, which, so she's trying really hard, but it's not bearing a lot of fruit. And that's about all I can think of that happened.
Thank you.
So, agenda item number 11, news releases.
Yeah, I, I think it would be worth, you mentioned the climate action plan. I think it would be worth us sketching something in, in the future around the climate action plan. This is probably better, it comes from the Environment Committee than any other committee about the work that's been done on the climate action plan and show some of the successes and moves that we've gone forward. Because we had a big, we had a big press release about doing it 12 or 18 months ago or whatever, three years ago when we started it. You're looking at me trying to remember when we started, aren't you? But we haven't really done any publicity about the achievements in it and the fact that we actually moved some things forward. And I think that with Nina managing it, we would be able to point to some of the things that we've moved forward to actually communicate to the public that we had a climate action plan and we're actually starting to move it forward. And that's a way of engaging the public in the conversation and about it, to keep it current rather than dormant. And I think this committee is the right committee to do that, really, not anywhere else.
The action plan is owned by full council, but Environment wants to talk about it.
I just think it's Environment and it's Environmental Action Plan. I know it's owned by full council. Just see that the Environment Committee is probably the best committee to do a press release around it, really.
I think there's a fairly big overlap that we should be exploiting with the neighbourhood development plans. For example, taking again myself as an example, I've moved to a big new housing development where are the electric car chargers? There are none. Lots of other things like that. So, you know, that, that is a massive impact that we could be having on climate emergency. So there is this overlap with how we develop our neighbourhood plan.
I'm going to take councillor out and then councillor Stutford.
Just, just a thought, councillor Stutford quite rightly says we should be putting out a press release and all in favour of that. Can we use the words continuing rather than beginning? Because we want to show that we're well on the second or third lap, we're not just under the starter's gun. Yeah, and, and indicates it's ongoing process and we're well on it.
I think, I think you raise a good point. So when it comes to the Tindret Road Estate, the thing is when the Tindret Road Estate was first envisaged, which was probably almost nearly a decade ago in the 2015 plan, which is nearly a decade, isn't it? It became part of the Buckingham neighbourhood plan. Actually, the conversation at that point was not about putting in, so like when we had Lace Hill, we found that when Lace Hill was constructed, internet was not considered when they put in Lace Hill Development. So what we're doing is learning. So you raise a really good point about how we influence it. Now, I think it might be something we need to see whether it's made its way into the section 106 for the Ozia Way development. I was, the, the scope in the section 106 is available or the draft, I don't think it's been signed off yet. But I think it's something that perhaps we should ask planning committee to look at whether the section 106 in Ozia Way. What we should try and do is, is make sure that the new estates catch up with where the today's, I know that councillors have discussed it in committee about having chargers in it. And I do think there was some discussion from the town council's point of view in the planning committee about having charges in that estate. What I can't be assured is, because I haven't got the section 106 here, although I can find it quite easily, is whether they actually made it into the outline section 16. And of course, with that new estate, if you have the patience, there's about 70, 80 amendments to that development plan going through at the moment. I know, but I'm just answering to say, but I do think that that's something that we should go through planning with.
Right. So we're going on to item number 12, chairs announcements. I have no announcements. And the date of the next meeting is the 12th of June 2023. And the committee will turn to private session now.
Could we resolve if that's what you want to do, we need to have a vote on it.
Oh, sorry, guys. New, new to this game. So we're going to vote on going into private session. All in favour?
Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you.
We had agreed that the sections would be in private.
Thanks, Lee.
No, he's staying.
Oh, is he?
I'm sticking around for a bit.
Yeah. I haven't stopped YouTube yet, so.
Yeah, that's really strong.